Sorry, Bruce.
I appreciate the opportunity to come forward this evening. And I just wanted to provide an update on a program that we are eligible for through the Department of Agriculture and their December program. They have altered a private pesticide container recycling program for a number of years. And a number of the counties in the state participate in that. And they're really wanting to see more participation. And it's a way to keep pesticide containers, those will be empty pesticide containers that have been properly fenced and cleaned out of the landfill. And then they have contractors that come in and pick up the containers. I've helped neighboring counties with the program in previous years. And I've seen anywhere from a contractor shipping the containers on the site as well as just coming in with a rear loaded type trash truck and putting the containers in those to haul to a facility or for shredding inside a facility. So it just depends on who gets the state contract for that getting here as to how the empty containers are picked up and handled. And I'll be happy to handle any questions that you may have at this time.
Lord, so.
So does this require any local action or anything?
The way the program works, the Department of Agriculture will reimburse up to $1,875 earned here. The calendar is in an actual calendar year from January 1st to December 31st. And once, the county would need to provide me with some type of structure to house these containers in. Neighboring localities have basically used 20 to 40 foot shipping containers for work where we can put a lock on to keep unwanted access and so forth. Other localities have used tractor trailer van boxes, but those are a little harder to get in and out of. And as well as some localities, you can have taken some of these little office type buildings that are portable and use those for housing containers. So there's no magic bullet solution as to what, as to what the state requires. It's just whatever the county would want to provide. And in other instances that I've been involved with, the locality would front the cost of the container and then utilize the reimbursement for either the second or third year to cover the cost of the container. And then after that, the funding, I could use it to help promote the container recycling. I could use it for safety equipment to provide the farmers with the tape, gloves, and hydration and so forth.
How much of a need is it?
Well, we're seeing our farms get bigger and bigger. So the containers, rather than being spread across many small farms, we're seeing large accumulations of them. And we're even seeing a move to more bigger containers as far as how the product is being handled. I will say that the reason I wanted to do this, I did receive some, I've been receiving more phone calls each year with individuals concerned about empty containers that are falling off the vehicles, running on the highway, containers that are in high visibility areas, were contracted areas where people are seen. And I've even, last year I even went around and actually picked up containers myself to take to a neighboring county and put in their collection site.
When you say container, you're speaking of something in the order of 50 gallon through?
No, sir. Two and a half gallon size is the most common. And the concern with those, that they are made of very sturdy material and that there are no instances, not here, but in other states, where those containers are acquired and used for hauling drinking water. So that's the main concern, we want to keep them out of usage like that.
So when it's recycled, you got to have an inspector there?
I would serve as the local inspector as far as are they being cleaned properly to be tested and mustered. There is, I contacted the Department of Agriculture, who will oversee the program and the senior Rogers. He will actually come and visit the site multiple times throughout the year as well as be present at the collection. And even the company that does the pickup, they actually look at all the containers as well when they're being either spread or loaded into the program.
So if you, excuse me, if you had any kind of monetary figure in mind that the cost would be?
The cost would be, you know, if the county so desires 20 foot shipping container. Those, and again, it's been since December since I last looked into pricing, but I would think around $3,000 to easily acquire one. And, you know, so that would take roughly almost two years worth of reimbursement for that call.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Speaker.
You mentioned that the containers have to be clean. So in other words, our dump personnel would have to, when the farmer or whoever brought the container, would have to make sure that it had been cleaned out before they accept it?
The goal of the program would be for myself as the extension agent to serve as the monitor and actually set up collection dates or specific times. What I would foresee is I would probably travel around to many of the farms and actually do a lot of the collection of the containers myself and then transport them to the storage site. That's just part of my daily activities. Now, I don't, I don't really foresee having any landfill personnel involved, you know, unless the county so desires. And that brings another point as to where the structure would be located. I mean, in neighboring localities, those structures have actually been placed at chemical dealerships. And I have not taken the opportunity yet to talk with old farm supply to see if they might be interested in a container setting at their site. And then you would have farmers that would drop off containers just during their regular business activities.
So who will be the collection manager?
I would be.
You would be?
Yes.
I'm just trying to figure in my mind the route or the procedure you would go through. So they would pick up the container. First of all, when, let's say the farmer has a container, has, it's already been approved by somebody?
They, when we do our winter educational meetings that pesticide applicators have to attend every second year to maintain their license, one of our major topics is how to handle empty containers, how to properly clean and rinse them and so forth. So, and as part of this program, I can also get rinse novels from the Department of Agriculture and supply to the farmers. So they have the best tool that's out there to rinse the containers with.
Ellis Chairman, if I understand what Mr. Jones is saying correctly, all that's required of us as a county would be to supply the container for these empties to be put in until they're picked up for recycling. And that Mr. Jones would oversee that container and what goes into that container. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir.
That makes it better for me to understand.
Mr. Chairman, there's the additional cost of pickup from whatever trash, there's an additional cost for disposal, right?
If it's okay.
Ms. Adams.
That was going to be my question in looking at annual budgeting. What we have to put in a cost for picking up the containers to be recycled and you would do?
The Department of Agriculture covers 100% of that cost.
Okay, so we wouldn't have any of that.
Okay, so the 1,800.
What would be, that would be funding to come back to my office or to the county, how the county would desire, to promote the program as well as to cover any travel expenses I might have in picking up containers.
Is there a length of time on that reimbursement?
Well, it's a yearly process. So the budget cycle is January 1st through December 31st. All receipts would be submitted to the Department of Agriculture by the end of January. The cost is going to carry it upfront and then reimbursed at the end of the year. And the $1,875 is good for four consecutive years.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, sir. We appreciate the info and...
For the county to have the opportunity to speak to you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jones, I just been asked, you got to put this in your budget request, right?
There's already one line item in there.
Okay.
I don't know if...
If, I may have only put the $1,875, which I knew would be reimbursable. So we might need to revisit that.
Okay, thanks.
I think it is included in that budget request. The decision of the board is, do you want to purchase the large container? I think he had like 38, was it 3850 in there? That would be a decision of the board to front the cost for the purchase of those items.
Any other questions concerning this subject? Okay, let's move on to the FY '23 budget discussion. Ms. Adams.
Yes, sir. You should have two documents before you, well, you just had the expenditure document, and that's my newsletter. What we did after our work session the other night is we went back and we added some of those new requests into the budget, the expenditure budget. And you can tell in that last column, it shows the difference from last year's request to this year's request. So you can look through that. And if there are any questions, this would be the appropriate time to address those questions. As well as we had a couple of items that we needed to follow up on. And Ms. Marshall has spoken with Gladstone and Toga Fire Departments, and she has a report from those departments.
All right. So I spoke with Toga sometime last week to discuss the things that you all had asked. They wanted to report that they are fully operational. They currently have 36 volunteers active on their roster. They have reported that they cover all the way out to Vera in Appomattox County. And they have recently added an emergency shelter in the building that Appomattox County will be able to do a lot of. So they were adding their requests to the $3,000 that people have had in previous years. I did also speak with Gladstone for our department. He, his answer was also, yes, they are fully operational. They currently have 24 volunteers on their roster. But I was not given much more information than that, that they would also gladly request the $3,000 for this year.
All right. Thank you for that info.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
In fact, last week at the budget workshop, we talked about whether Mr. Wingfield could tell us, or somebody could tell us how many calls those agencies ran in Appomattox. Do we have those numbers?
We do. Did you bring that?
In my email here from Mr. Wingfield, I currently have Toga as far as this year in 2022, they have responded to two fire calls in conjunction with Appomattox. And Gladstone for this year of 2022, we have six.
Do we know about last year?
Um, yes. Last year in 2021, we had 15 for Gladstone. And last year for Toga, we had two.
Did you want to read his notes about what he notated?
I can, sure.
Okay.
For Toga specifically, they have full operational status in that area, but it is not populated in Appomattox County due to the state forest land. Dispatch is currently dual toning with Appomattox Fire on all fire calls because we are not confident of the response and very minimal calls yearly with Toga. And then as far as Gladstone, fully operational status. Dispatch has started dual tones with Appomattox Fire on all fire calls because we are not confident on the response.
They weren't toning for dual calls anywhere in the county, so that doesn't change anything. Okay, thank you. It's supposed to be.
That changed last year, year before?
Two years ago.
Two years. So are there any questions, first of all, in looking at the last column with the differences from last year to this year's budget? And at some point in time, we need to talk about what, what you would like to propose to do with the employee compression and raises. You had asked me about the Sheriff's Department, and I just ran a rough scenario today. If we increased per his request, the salaries starting at 42, we have 13 deputies that we would have to increase. And if we did a 5%, the total cost would be about 260,000 for the Sheriff's Department.
That would include part-time and full-time?
No, that's just the full-time positions. Yes. And if we have not made those decisions tonight, and you would like to wait until the General Assembly reconvenes on the 27th, we'll just have to make some adjustments on our public hearing for the budget and when we vote on the budget. So we'll make, need to make those adjustments also.
That's what I like to see personally. I don't know, what's the board's take on this? Wait for the GA or just go ahead?
I said wait.
Wait.
We've got time, right? We got, as long as we enact it by June.
End of June.
I mean, if we don't know where we're getting from the state, it's kind of hard to...
Yeah.
Say whatever we're spending.
That's right.
Yeah. On your budget calendar, we would just mark out the public hearing on the night of May the 16th, and we would have to move that out a week or so. And so we would be voting on the budget then seven days after that. So it would be into the first of June. And then we would appropriate the budget at the June meeting.
Okay. That's what we're going to do. Yeah, everybody's agreed to.
Do you want to go ahead and set a date for the public hearing for us to advertise?
Do you have any idea?
What was it? The tentative one was May 20 something. Is that right?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Originally on our budget calendar, it was May 20 something.
Um, yeah, we were going to vote on, have the public hearing on the 16th and then approve it on the 25th. So we could move the public hearing until after the 16th and have it the following week. And then we would have to wait seven days and then come back and vote on the budget.
Can I ask a question? So we've got to meet somewhere in between April 27th, when the state comes back and handles the, we hope handles their budget. We still couldn't use that 16th and 25th date in May? That gives us two weeks?
No, the problem is for the public hearing, you have to advertise two weeks in the local paper circulation. We can't count it from Monday. We have to count it the day it circulated on Wednesday. So we have to do two Wednesdays, consecutive Wednesdays. The auditors wrote us up one year because we were one day early.
So you're looking at, what was it, the 20 what?
Well, the public hearing could be the 25th of, that we had on the calendar. And then you'd have to set a new date in June to come back and vote on the budget.
We couldn't do that at a regular June meeting?
Well, you could. The only thing, some of the departments, like the schools usually like to have their budget by the end of May, but...
Social services.
Yeah, social services year begins June 1st. Would be the only problem with that.
What's your suggestion?
Well, it depends on if you want to come back for special call meetings for those two activities, which we already had the 25th to come back and vote on the budget so we could have a public hearing. And then the first week in June, you could vote on the budget.
Well, what's a pleasure.
Or even the second week in June. The 25th, you won't be here? Is it just that one day? Oh, okay.
I was going to say, once you start getting into Memorial Day weekend and the first couple of weeks of June, a lot of vacations start happening.
I mean, I guess technically, I mean, you could have, you could vote on the 20th if you had the public hearing somewhere in between there.
How confident are we that the state's going to actually have a budget April 27th? From what I'm reading, it may or may not happen.
Dr. Bennett and I are meeting tomorrow to talk about the school budget, but we're just using the numbers from the House.
Well, it kind of sounds like to me that, excuse me, we just have a, excuse me, a call meeting to settle it.
Yeah. I think you probably need to go ahead and set that date, especially for the public hearing, so that we can get that advertised.
Yeah.
And post it so that everyone will know if they want to attend. I can send out a survey tomorrow. Well, you won't be able to vote on it. Do they have to have an official vote at the meeting?
No, they could be, they could send you dates.
Okay. Okay. You want to do that? I'll send out some dates. Does that work?
That sounds good to me. I bet the rest of the vote...
Okay.
And if one of us happens to be on vacation, if it's just specifically for that one purpose, that could be a quick phone in, is that allowable under our bylaws?
That would count as one of the two, right?
Okay.
If that would be the only, you would only convene for the purpose of the public hearing, close the meeting, and leave?
And no action would be taken?
No action would be taken. So I mean, if, if you wanted to not use that as one of your meetings, we have it recorded, you can view it prior to the vote.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Henkel.
In view on the information from Gladstone and Toga Fire Departments, I recommend that we put 3,000 for each of them in the budget.
Second. Motion been duly made. Second is out. Further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote, Mr. Hips? Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Henkel?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
I also vote aye.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify.
Yes, sir.
Did we already include Red House?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm glad you asked that because I couldn't remember.
In fact, I think we still have Toga. We didn't remove anything yet, so...
I mean, it looks like they're all still in here, so I had to make sure.
Those were the only ones that were not addressed last week that you had questions about?
Any other discussion? Well, Ms. Adams, you and your staff have done extremely well.
Thank you, sir.
Under the certain circumstances you had to, had to go through.
It's a work in progress.
I know it. I love it, don't you?
I do, too.
Okay, we're going to go in our regular session. Citizen public comment period, this time is provided by the board to allow citizens the opportunity to address the board on issues of importance to these citizens. No additional citizens shall be permitted to address the board for more than three minutes. Anybody to sign up? Mr. Rowick? Ace? Thank you, sir. Okay. We have Mrs. Eleanor Johnson. Come on up to the mic and just state your name and address for the record.
Eleanor Johnson, 125 Hawk Lane, Pamplin. I'm here tonight, I'm going to use my notes this time. Last time I come, my husband accused me of not looking at them, so I promise I'm going to use them. I'm here tonight to speak against a permit that is up for approval tonight by you all to submit for a two-day event that is advertised for a four-day. First, I would like to say how disappointed I am in the county administrator, sheriff, public safety director, the building and fire marshal, and the zoning administrator for approving a permit for the 420 High Fly High Festival. And hope that the Appomattox County supervisors will understand why I am asking that you deny this permit. I am under the impression that you all want to keep our county a small, historical, family orientated county. Why do we want to invite adults to come in from other parts of the state and other states to smoke marijuana in our county? Many of you may not know what a 420 farm is. It is a place where people are welcome to come in and smoke dope or marijuana, whatever you want to call it. The sheriff did make a note on the permit about this. And according to the information on the internet, the 420 farm at Hawk Lane is classified as a marijuana farm, a working farm, and a celebration to celebrate the growing season. There, that is the season of marijuana now. They also state that they grow and harvest the crop. Now, having made you aware of this, I'm going back to the safety of my neighborhood. We do not want the marijuana and dope in our community. The road going into the farm, as you all know, I've spoken to you before about that in the dust, it has not been improved yet. They're looking between 250 and 300 vehicles and claim they're expecting 300. That's a lot of cars on a one-lane road. If they have an emergency or any of the neighbors have an emergency, there's no way fire trucks, police personnel, or anybody else can get in. there's no way fire trucks, police personnel, or anybody else can get in if people are coming out. It's impossible to pass without stopping. It's just a really a big disadvantage for us. We don't need the extra traffic and we do not need the marijuana there. We do not want people coming out that are high from smoking marijuana and on my road or Al County roads. We have a church in the vicinity, we have a lot of young people in our church that are coming in and out, driving teenagers. We certainly do not want to subject them to this, and I ask that you all deny this permit. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Brian Vandergriff. Name and address for the record, please, Brian.
Brian Vandergriff, seven seven nine Swanee Creek Road, Pamplin. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the time. First of all, I'd like to say I'm a proponent of, uh, individual liberties and property rights. And I had a hard time kind of coming to this conclusion, but, uh, also, when we have freedoms, we also have responsibilities. I'm here to comment on the fly-high, uh, four-twenty event. Um, it's advertised for April twenty-first, Thursday, uh, through Sunday, the twenty-fourth. Location is five fifty-one Hawk Lane. It's advertising as a marijuana farm with a music festival that's going to be going on. Uh, it's going to feature a marijuana market. The music includes bands and DJs, uh, they have, uh, twenty-four performers listed to perform. The schedule is from three P M. to three A M. They're selling tickets at sixty-five dollars a pop, eighty dollars for vendors, uh, running a campground, uh, twenty dollars for, for campground, a hundred fifty for R V. parking, and you can also buy a twelve-hundred-dollar V I. P. package. I'm not sure the size of the scope of this, you know, I'm no, I'm not sure how many tickets have been sold, so I'm not sure how big an event this will be. I'm just, based on October of last year, they had a similar event. And it was like three or four days long, some, similar to what we got now, uh, with the advertising, and it had loud music from about three to all hours of the night. It was so loud that, you know, you couldn't sleep at night, you know, for three or four nights, and after three nights of not sleeping, I get a little tested. I live six tenths of a mile, according to, to the Google map, from, from this location, and it was pretty loud. The event seemed to be an unintended consequence of the General Assembly passing a marijuana legislation last session. Uh, it went from four, being able to grow four plants behind your house to a four-day music festival. And I just think it's kind of went, got out of hand over time, over, over the last couple of months. I'd just like to, to state I oppose this permit for those reasons, uh, the loud music and the public nuisance to the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Spud Allman.
My name is George Spud Allman, and I live at three oh four Dabney Lane, Pamplin, Virginia. I too have come here to, uh, ask you to deny this permit, uh, for kind of a different reason, and I live far enough away that, uh, I have to listen hard to hear the music, but, uh, it can be heard. When I was down there, our church owns property that I found out recently that adjoins this farm. Uh, and, uh, it's the, uh, original grounds of the church, uh, when the church was founded two hundred and some years ago. Uh, it's, has a picnic pavilion there, there's an area that, and I was down there Friday, uh, checking out the area, getting ready for the, uh, sunrise service, Sunday morning, that we always do, and I noticed a sign over, uh, in the woods. So I walked over, I said, oh, what that sign is, somebody must have said, you know, welcome. Uh, also used for baptizing and several other churches use that, people want to be baptized in the creek still and use that. Well, and I walked over there and it said, uh, Waterway. Well, excuse me, and it had the two, uh, marijuana plant signs on it. And I said, well, that's unusual, so I looked on up the road a little bit further, up the woods, and there's a very clear path marked on up there. I had remembered older people talking about when that was original whole farm, that, that people would come down that path to, uh, come down to the baptizing hole, and I said, okay, well, so they've cleaned this up pretty good, you know, and it's very well marked for people to use that are on that farm. The problem with that is that, uh, we have that for the, uh, it adjoins directly to the church property. And it's a pavilion there, uh, people bring their children down there to take pictures. Uh, like I said, we had this, uh, sunrise service there, the youth meet down there at times, and, uh, anyway, and I know, uh, I've looked at that permit and it, the map shows all the area up at the top of the hill there. But if you have that many people and it's not a hidden thing that they're going to be smoking marijuana, also, I think alcohol was mentioned in the permit too. Uh, it's possible, whoa, that's a good trail here, it's very well marked, let's go down here and see where it goes. And sometimes Saturday, you know, a, a group from churches over there picnicking or camping or over there with their children and things, I know this particular thing permit says no one under twenty-one permitted, and I just think the chances, uh, with this many people engaged in this, and I'm kind of like Brian, I'm, I'm, hey, it's your ground and your land, and if you ain't bothering nobody or hurting nothing or doing anything illegal, you ought to kind of be able to do. But at some point, when it rolls over to somewhere else, then I think it's time we have to step back and take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Lee?
My name is Doug Lee, pastor of Rocks Baptist Church at three ninety-three Rocks Church Road, and also, owners of the property at three eighty-one Swanee Creek that adjoins, um, the, the property that's in consideration this evening. Our church is, um, if not the, one of the oldest continuing churches in Appomattox County. We've served this county since seventeen seventy-two. Celebrating our two hundred and fiftieth anniversary this year, yes, we are older than America. Our church first wants to thank you for your service to our community. We appreciate your efforts to maintain an environment in our county that attracts persons and makes this a great place to raise a family. The original site of our church borders the property of those whose application is being considered for special use of their land. Of specific concern to our church is a particular part of our church's property that includes Swanee Creek adjacent to that property. That portion of the creek has been used by our church for many, many years as a baptizing place, as well as a shelter for special activities such as the Easter sunrise service that was mentioned already. We want to ensure that this property will not be encroached upon during these activities, since we have already seen outsiders on our property using it as their own. Our concerns have increased with the possibilities of having large crowds present. We're also concerned that the loud music would conflict with events that we may also have intended for the use, uh, of our property, which is very close. Again, we thank you for your service.
Thank you. And does anyone else like to address the board who failed to sign up? Yes, sir. Come on up, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ray Peterson, I live at one five five Hawk Lane. Just to let you know, I'm a retired police officer, twenty-seven years, I ran a police department. I came from a war zone in New Jersey. I moved to Appomattox County because it's like New Jersey was fifty years ago. If it's going to change this fast, it's time for me to sell my farm. It's a shame to have something like this in a community where everybody gets along. There's no good that can come from marijuana, that has its place, do not get me wrong medically, but to have a celebration over the marijuana and selling it or giving it away, which to my knowledge is illegal, makes no sense. I tried to get guidance from state police today on what the exact law is, and they could not give me an answer. So excuse me for not having on my facts stamp, but i- in our opinion, no good can come from this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board who failed to sign up? Okay. We're moving on. Next is Ms. Patricia Morton, registrar. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you, good evening, and thank you for your time. I have, uh, two topics that I meant to talk about and two that I added, but I will try to be really quick. The first is, I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that there is no Democratic primary happening, you've probably all seen it in the news. Uh, this will save the county quite a bit of money, um, so that's, uh, that's what, what's happening there. The second item is the split precinct waiver. As you are aware, Pamplin City is a town that crosses the county boundary, it's partly in Prince Edward, partly in Appomattox. You did this waiver last year, uh, as a precaution in case we had a special election. It's vital this year to have this waiver to, um, allow us to basically split our ballot, and then the Pamplin registrar, excuse me, the Prince Edward County registrar will give me the tallies for Pamplin, which I will then enter into the state system come fall. So this is just a formality, uh, the memo that you should have asks that you make a motion and approve it, and what that does is allow me to go forward and request from the state a split precinct. So I believe you have a motion in front of you, hopefully, if not, I'd be happy to pass it around, a suggested motion. And I encourage you to pass that tonight, please.
Ms. Chairman?
I think, yeah, go ahead.
If I could ask a question?
Of course.
The registrar, so how would, and I know we've done this before because Pamplin is split in two counties. But now that local elections have to fall in November. They used to be in May, so it didn't, in May, the only folks voting were people that lived in town.
That's right.
So now in November, you'll have people voting that don't live in town, so how is that going to affect the operations of this precinct? When there's a town election and maybe a county election or a state election that everybody's voting in?
Sure.
How's that going to work?
Um, for both towns, for Appomattox and Pamplin, it means that they have to hand out two different ballots, and they have to know from the poll book which place the voter lives. So it's very similar to what we did in my office for early voting last fall when we had to hand out four different ballots.
So do they put them in the same machine after they vote?
Yes.
Or do they have to put them in two different places?
Nope, they'll put them in the same machine, and they get tallied separately. So that, you know, they know, they know all the state offices on the Pamplin City ballot will get tallied along with the state offices for the rest of the county, or the rest of the precinct, rather.
So they're identified?
They're identified. Yes, yes, so one ballot will be longer than the other, and handed out to a different set of people.
I'm sure that causes, uh, all kinds of issues for, for you guys, um, but I'm confident you'll handle it.
Yes, yes, uh, the one we're really worried about, to give you a heads up, is the law just passed where we have to report all early voting and absentee results by precinct. And that means we will be handing out a dozen different ballots at a minimum this fall in my office, and maybe as many as twenty. We're waiting on guidance on that, so that's, uh, a very interesting law.
Did you have anything else?
Um, I do, besides, I have the memorandum of understanding, I didn't know if you wanted to finish this and then move on or not.
We'll, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, we'll vote on it, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the request for a split precinct in Pamplin as applied by Virginia Code, section twenty-four point two dash three oh seven, being as how the Pamplin precinct consists of the town of Pamplin, which is partly in Appomattox County and partly in Prince Edward County. Second.
Motion duly made, is that second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? All in favor of a roll call vote, Mr. Hips, Reverend Jones, Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
Also vote aye.
Thank you. All right, now, the second one, item on the agenda for us was, uh, the memorandum of understanding, which you have a copy of the memorandum, and what I had Ace put up here is a summary of the points on the memorandum. To, I thought this would be the fastest way to get through this. So I don't, you may not be able to read the screen, but hopefully they will read the paper coming around. Basically, what we tried to do is we took the two thousand fourteen memorandum that we had with Central Baptist Church, and Frank and I rewrote it, uh, with the help of, um, Thomas and Susan, and I thank you for that. And we basically went through and just said, what, can we keep the same, what do we need to make a little more explicit? So the basic agreement on the use of the space, we made a little more explicit. The notification on elections, the access on Monday and Wednesday to move our things, the American with Disabilities Act was all in there, the donation, the insurance, all of that is the same. On the electoral board campaigns, uh, signs, we made that a little more specific, and that helped with some of the discussions we had with polling locations. The length of the commitment, the Central Baptist Church had four to ten years in there, we left it more open-ended and just basically said that we're trying to get, engage in a long-term commitment. And so it's a little more pragmatic, um, I believe that's in our favor. The effective date, we did not specify that, uh, all of the contact information, table use, kitchen use, parking lot use, all of that kind of stuff, we just spelled out in a little more detail. And then for notice on termination, we made it six months for the polling location to notify us, the other one was twelve months for either party. And then the entire agreement clause is the same. So it's basically just a little bit of a tighter memorandum, and it's been, the draft version has been viewed by, like I said, Thomas and by Susan. It's been viewed by the two new polling locations, everybody so far has been happy with it. And Susan has a copy of, uh, two agreements with the two new polling location addresses on them. And I would appreciate if you would, one of you would, you know, after discussion, be willing to sign that and then get that back to us in the next week or so. That would be great, because basically we just need to move forward, the plan was to execute these memorandum of understanding with the two new polling locations, and then Kayla had requested, uh, some time ago that we update our memorandum of understanding with Central Baptist and actually go and execute them with the other locations which never had one in place. Is that correct, Susan?
Yeah.
So our plan is do these two, then go back and, and talk to the other locations about doing this exact same, hopefully, memorandum with them. So that we just have everything covered and we're in, in writing what they're doing, what we're doing, all of that, just tighten it up a little bit. So, any questions on that?
One more explanation, when you sign it, we'll hand carry it to the church and to the queen, have them sign it, then we'll bring, send a copy back to you, and they'll keep a copy. And we'll keep copying, of course.
I'd like to say this, that, uh, in order to keep down any confusion, okay, in regards to the sign policy, I think you need somewhere on there to say it must be signed by the candidate. Because a lot of people, and I was one of them, had never heard of that before until this year's election.
Good point, yes, we're going to send a copy of this to every candidate and every campaign.
The physical signs, signed by the candidate?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. We would be happy to add that, assuming that that complies with the law.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Chairman?
Mr. Hogan?
One question about the sign policy, is this a little bit more, is this a new restriction about the folks picking up their signs by eight A M. the next day, because I know that... Because I know that hasn't always happened.
It's been there, but never been a policy. It's been a general rule, but it's never been a policy. But we've had issues with, specifically, Glean asked us to help them with that because they had to pick a lot of them up. So if they're not up Wednesday morning, we'll pick them up. We just, and we want the campaigns and candidates to know that we're of that.
Okay. I think it's good. I think that's good. I think it's good that the facilities that are agreeing to host the polls would appreciate all that stuff being gone.
Absolutely.
Yes.
You know, at least by the end of the day, Wednesday, 8:00 a.m. is pretty early, but if you can get it done that quick, thank you.
We did that because we want it done by the time we go around and pick up the machines on Wednesday. Our custodian will have the right to pick them up if they're still there.
Any other questions on the MOU? Okay.
All right.
And then the one last thing I wanted to tell you was just to give you a very brief redistricting update. Now that the election is not happening for June, I can breathe the sigh of relief because I do not have to mail 2,300 voters twice, which was what it was looking like. And so that will save the county some money as well. We are on hold right now. We know all the streets and all the segments that have to change of the streets for redistricting, but Elect has us on hold because they're having a lot of trouble with the software and getting everybody through. So all of the people that had to be done sooner so that they could have their June elections are the ones that are getting in the queue. And I'm just waiting and checking my data. I'm like Santa Claus, checking my list and checking my list. So we're getting our data as clean as we can, and so that when we go, we'll be able to go quickly. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Need a motion to authorize signature on the MOU.
Can we do that in one motion for both of them?
Yeah, authorize the chairman to sign both of them.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we authorize you to sign the MOUs with both of these new polling places.
Motion duly made and second for the discussion. Roll call vote, Mr. Hips, Reverend Jones, Mr. Hinkle, Mr. Hogan, also vote aye. Okay. Next is a special event permit application request. Blue Knight at the Evergreen Lavenda Farm. Lavender.
Is that like aluminium?
Yes. I knew Mr. Hips would love that. Attached for the board's review is a special annual, special event permit application from Ken Swanson for a Blues Knight at the Evergreen Lavenda Farm, to be held on April 30, 2022, at the Evergreen Lavenda Farm located on 7169 Old Evergreen Road in Appomattox, Virginia. This is a music concert, which will start at 6:00 p.m. and end at 9:00 p.m. There will be food and wine available for purchase. A mission fee is $10 per person. There is a rain or shine event, no plan for cancellation. The Sheriff Public Safety Director, Building Inspector, Zoning Administrator, and County Administrator reviewed and approved the application with added comments. Floor is open for discussion on the Lavenda Farm event. This is something that they had every year. Said, yes, what I thought. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to approve.
Is that second? Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Okay, next, special event application request, Fly High 420 Festival. Attached for the board's views is a special event permit application from Amy and Brooklyn Ward for a Fly High 420 Festival, to be held on Friday, April 22, and Saturday, April 23. Well, I guess that's through April 23, 2022. The event would be held at 451 Hawk Lane, Pamplin, Virginia. The Music Celebration of Life Event is being held to celebrate the upcoming grow season and in remembrance of Alex Johnson, who took his own life on December 30, 2021. The application has been reviewed and approved by the Public Safety Officer Director, Building Official, Sheriff, Zoning Administrator, and County Administrator, with comments. Floor is open for discussion on this special event permit application. Oh, okay. You'd like to address the board?
Yes.
Okay. Just state your name and address for the record.
My name, excuse me, my name is Amy Ward, and I reside at 451 Hawk Lane. I apologize, I did not know that there was such discontent for our festival. I would like to say how much I love the area and respect my neighbors. Absolutely respect the church and the sacred ground that's out back there. We actually posted signs as well that say, do not cross the creek. So I hope that that helps. When we do have guests that come to stay with us, we lead them down to that area, but we tell the history. As much as I know of it, I've said hundreds of years that they've been coming. And it is impressive to me that people have come for hundreds of years. There are some daffodils on my hill that I know were planted hundreds of years ago. I talk about that. I talk about how much I love this area and the history of it and the different layers of our farm that have been remodeled over the years. We have history of that and pictures of it and how we used to have slave quarters there, and we took them down. But we still have pictures of it. We have an original deed that was found in the wall. I care about our history and I care about our farm. I do like cannabis, and I stay within the legislation of the law. I am allowed to have four legal plants that I grow outside. I like them. I like to educate people on them. We talk about seedlings. We talk about genetics of plants. We talk about medicinal purposes. I'm probably going to say that part for the end, but I will stay within Virginia current legislation about it. I understand that some people, you know, have a bad history with the plant marijuana, with some things that were, should, in my opinion, should have never been outlawed. Virginia itself has an incredible long history of using hemp. And hemp is the same plant as marijuana. I also grow hemp on the land, which has zero THC. It's just a beautiful plant, many, many uses for it. When he said, somebody said, no good can come from this festival? I see good every time somebody comes to my farm. We have reviews on Airbnb. I have, I didn't know that it was a negative thing, or I would have brought them with me today. But I have reviews that people leave me, letters talking about the calming feel of our farm, the open air, the night sky. 92% of our guests have seen a shooting star. The place to me, this place, this land, this state, this county, our farm is magical. And I love it, and I love to share it in a respectful way with our neighbors, with our guests, and I don't want to disrespect our neighbors. They tell me of the hospitality. I do send them to town. I do send them to the Evergreen Lavenda Farm and tell them other things in this area that are wonderful. We are not expecting anywhere near 200 or 300 cars. We, at this point right now, we have sold 63 tickets. We expect 75 to 125 cars. That would include vendor cars that are coming as well as the people. We expect a total of approximately 200 people throughout the entire weekend, and some of them are not coming for the whole weekend, some are coming on certain days. I am doing everything that I can to keep traffic to an absolute minimum. We did provide a traffic plan. I made sure that the roads could handle it. We are mainly doing overnight camping. And that is, number one, because I am 1,010% against impaired driving, whether it be alcohol or cannabis. We are not providing alcohol. We are not selling alcohol. I do not promote alcohol. Some people are negative against cannabis. I'm negative against alcohol. It's a personal thing. Both are legal, but I'm not doing alcohol here. We abide by all legislation, absolutely no impaired driving. We will be IDing at the door. We have security 24 hours a day. And if we felt like somebody was under the influence or not able to drive, we would ask them not to drive and contact the police if it was a situation. That's our emergency plan for that. We do not sell marijuana. There is no marijuana market that will be up. Our vendors that we're talking about, we have educational talks that are going on throughout the day. They do talk about growing, talks about being legal, talks about getting your medical card, talks about different terpenes and flavors and strands. Talks about organic growing, talks about companion plants, plants that we could use for insecticides rather than putting chemicals into the ground. Our noise stops at 11:00 because that's the town law, and that's what we will do. Our music last time did not, and I apologize to the neighbor that heard it. We had two neighbors out of the same home that complained on our website. And the first complaint, I left up and apologized so that others could see, and I said it will not happen again. And it will not. What our noise is going to be, anything after, the only thing that we have after 11:00 is called a silent disco. And they come and get headphones, and they listen to headphones underneath a tent. There is zero noise. You cannot hear it. You can't hear what this person is listening to right in front of you. And we did that to respect our neighbors. The way that our hill, and I take my ignorance of why it happened last time, and can only promise you that it's not going to happen again this time. I'll give each of you my phone number. You can call me if you hear anything. You can call me if there's a car that you don't. I'll do anything that I possibly can to make this event go off and not be an intrusion on your lives in any way. I mean, I want to do it twice a year. This is the one I'm asking for now, but I want to do one at the beginning, and I want to do one at the end. So anyhow, the way that our land goes, it's an amphitheater-like setting, the hill where we put the music at, and when you go up. And at my house, I could not hear the sound at all last time. But in my ignorance, I did not understand that homes that I could not see, the way that it traveled down, that they could hear it and be, their space could be intruded upon. That was not my intent, and I believe that I have that solved for this time. I am thrilled to know the age of your church, because I always say hundreds of years, and now I will put 1772, before we were even a country, on that. And I am honored to be attached to it and will always respect that land. I feel like I have jumped through every hoop that I knew was out there. I got the permit to be a temporary campground. I did that. Mr. Rourke pointed me in the right direction. I had to take care of some potable water issues. I did that. I made sure that I've got the handicap toilets. I have exceeded the number of toilets that are needed. Like anything that somebody asked, I did. When I found out about the noise ordinance, I did that. Anything that you ask of me, I will do. I have increased my lighting for safety issues. It is uplighting that is unattractive, unobtrusive, intrusive to any neighboring land. I don't know how I can prove it to you. And I wish I would have brought more people here that would come and, you know, talk for me and talk for my farm. I really love this country, this county, all of it, and I hope that we can put on this event. So another good thing that comes of it is we work with GI Grows, and they provide cannabis medically towards that individual. We also provide for one breast cancer warrior who is fighting right now. And we provide for one ALS patient who is fighting right now. And the bigger part of this particular celebration is the celebration of life for my granddaughter's father took his life on December 30. And he was very active in helping us plan before. And his mental illness is obviously what drove him to take his life. And I believe that cannabis can really help in that avenue, as do many others and doctors. Whether you believe it or not, you know, I can't convince people about cannabis. We're bringing people together who are already there. I'm not trying to change your mind, and I don't think I could in some instances. But I'd like to celebrate him. And so if you turn this down, tell me how else I can, what number do I have to stay under to continue this celebration? His family's coming from West Virginia. And his friends are coming. And it's a special day for us. So thank you for your time. Please let me know if there's any hoop that I can jump through and give you my word. And I did, I got the million-dollar insurance policy. You know, absolutely anything that you ask of me, I will do. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Right, the floor is open for discussion of this special event permit. Pardon?
Can I make a comment?
Well, we usually don't, no, not at this point. We've gone past that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
I can appreciate Ms. Ward's application and all the hoops she has jumped through. I wish there'd been some more communication between the promoters or organizers and their neighbors. But I also see a lot of discrepancies between what's being advertised and what's in the application. That concerns me. There's talk, you know, when you look up the Fly High 420 Fest, the things advertised on those flyers and in what they're saying, some of that stuff, I believe, to be illegal. It talks about, you know, giving out plants and things like, can't do that. That's distribution. That's a felony. Even with the personal consumption is legal, you still can't distribute it. There's just too many inconsistencies for me. You know, hearing from you and what you've put in your application, I think you guys could probably hold something that's reasonable for your neighbors and but there's too many inconsistencies between what's being advertised and what's on the application for me.
Well, let me say this. I understand where you're coming from. And as the citizens have already expressed, you know, that a lot of people don't, what they have on their land, that's their land. They can do what they want to with it. However, and this is a case that to me is violating, if you will, the citizens, adjacent property owners that live around the farm that you were speaking of. They have rights to. This is something that I've always adhered to on any kind of application, that if there are citizens, adjacent property owners, that is against something like this, then I always go with them. Because I believe that if they were in tune with this, then it wouldn't be a problem. But they're not. I know that area. I know the people in that area. And they're not going to stand up here and tell you a lie. This is how they basically feel, and I have to support them. But I'm sorry, I can't do anymore. Anybody else? Here or none, is our motion? Well, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to deny it. Is our second?
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask the county attorney, is a negative motion in order?
Well, it's kind of like a zoning application. You either have to prove it or deny it. I think because the application is there. I think because the application is there and our ordinance allows for such an application. It does require board action. I, I think it would be appropriate to either approve or deny.
Okay. In that case, I'll second.
Okay. Motion been made and second. Further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote.
For clarification?
Yes, sir.
If I vote yes, I am denying the petition.
Yes. And you up. Mr. Hips? Mr. Jones? Mr. Henkel?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Okay. Moving on, the zoning building application fee increase. At the budget work session last week, Mr. Rourke presented a recommendation for the Community Development and Building Inspection Staff proposing zoning and building application fee increases with related county code changes. The Board authorized Mr. Rourke to advertise for a public hearing at the May meeting. Attachment for further review is an update to the proposed changes. They will be advertised and voted on by the Board after public comments are received at the May meeting. For the purpose of advertising, the public hearing staff is verifying the Board's intent to advertise the recommended zoning and building fees per the attachment. If no changes, no further action needs to be taken till after the public hearing in May. So we're looking for a motion to set, uh, set a date for a public hearing.
You don't need anything.
Don't need anything?
Change something. You don't need to do anything unless somebody doesn't like something that's on there.
So is everybody happy?
We just wanted clarification. We added the column of what the Board talked about and some of those fees were increased, so we wanted to make sure that that's what you wanted advertised.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
The only thing I see that just threw up a flag to, I don't remember talking about it, is, um, the, the two trades and three trades, the, the last two things at the bottom. And, and yeah, I remember you explaining what that meant. So this new one has got them both at the same cost fee. The old one had them, three trades was a hundred bucks. Now it's saying 75. Is that what, is that what you're recommending or was that just, was that a misprint? Cause I know that you discussed, talking about it, that's actually several different inspections.
Yeah, it was, uh,
It's reduced from 100 to 75 on the.
Yeah, we currently don't have any. We don't charge anything.
We, 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 we charge a minimum fee, which is 50. But we don't really have a category in our listing for two, two and three. So he wanted to specifically spell those out. So that, that's what it is now.
So is, the proposal is two trades combined 75 bucks, three trades combined 75 bucks?
That's what he had.
Okay, cause it was 100.
Was it 100?
I just wanna make sure.
That must be a typo.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so it must be, it was, yeah.
The original proposal was 100.
Is that, is that what it is?
Yeah, it's the 75 and 100. That's a typo on my part. The three trades would be 100.
And the two trades would be 75. Yeah, that's what we'll advertise.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So we gotta establish a meeting date in May?
No, no action. We can move on. We can move along. It's no action required.
And need to schedule a public hearing, conditional use permit 220226, Collins and Nina O'Brien, ABA C and N Recycling LLC. The planning commission met on Wednesday, April 13th, 2022, considered a conditional use permit submitted by Collins and Nina O'Brien. They are requesting a CUP to operate a scrap and salvage services business to, to be called C and N Recycling LLC at 1091 Wadabit Road. The planning commission recommended approval of the petition with several conditions. The petition will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors for consideration at a regular May meeting. A public hearing is required for our consideration of the petition. And in talking about the public hearing be held at 7:00 PM, May the 16th, to receive public comment on the zoning petition for Collins and Nina O'Brien. Is that a dumb deal too?
No, we need to make a motion.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve? Is that second?
Uh, second, this is just for the public hearing, right?
Yeah. Discussion? Only favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is appropriation for bonuses. Circuit Court Clerk's Office, Commonwealth Attorney Office and Department of Social Services. At the March 2022 meeting, the Board of Supervisors authorized $1,000 bonus for the employees in the Circuit Court Clerk's Office, Commonwealth Attorney's Office and the Department of Social Services. So there were costs, please authorize by consent, $33,371.50 for, of new local funds to be transferred from the general fund appropriated for, into the line items. And you have listed that the line items are, that is requested. Mr. Hips? Motion's been made by Mr. Hips to transfer the funds.
Second.
And second. Further discussion? Mr. Hips? Reverend Jones? Mr. Henkel?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
No.
And I vote no. Okay, next is Circuit Court Clerk's request. Attached for the Board's review's request from Ms. Janet Hicks, Circuit Court Clerk requesting adjustments to ma, to be made to personnel salaries. The funds were appropriated and the clerk fit, uh, clerk's FY22 departmental budget and when an employee leaves, the funds are not specific to the position but to individual personnel. An employee departed in March and Mrs. Hicks is requesting to reappropriate $4,457 of local funds that were budgeted to the depart, departing employee's position and supplement them to the other deputy clerk positions in her office. Now, for this, we need a motion to readjust the $4,457 of local funds to other deputy clerk positions in her office, if it shall be. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Henkel.
Would it be my understanding that if we were to do that, we are committing ourselves to this additional in the new budget also because this is funds that were approved for a specific employee during this year's budget and by making this move, we're committing for next year's budget, these raises?
It would be.
Yes, sir.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
I know we've allowed constitutional officers to move funds when people leave and adjust salaries and, but, but the employees in her office, uh, in this particular office, uh, we just did this six months ago, back in August, the fall, early, late summer. We just, um, we just did this. So this would be the fourth raise that people in that office would get since last June. I don't know that it's appropriate that we, I, I, I just got,
Bad feelings.
Bad feelings about taking one office and you get other offices that only get raises once a year. And then this office, some people are gonna get raises four times. And then in, come July, they'll, you know, and one, you know, I, I, I just think that sets a bad precedent. I think we got a couple of employees that have received double-digit raises this budget year in that office and this would give them more? I just, I'm a little hesitant to do that.
Mr. Chairman, so,
Reverend Jones?
I understand. So is this money gonna be appropriated to people already working in the office or is it for a new position?
I don't, what, what do you know?
Would you like me to address that?
Please.
We have a letter in the board book and it's from Ms. Hicks and an employee departed that had a local fund supplement of $4,457. She would like to take that from the employee that left and divide it among the other three employees in the office. One of those being an employee that replaced that person and was hired on April 1st, 2022. So these are the local funds amount that she would like to distribute to these, all the, the employees.
And that's on top of any state raises?
This is local fund only. So, um, this would not take into account any future raises. This is effective this month.
And if, and if forthgoing with that person, for his raises? New person or whatever it is?
Um, the new person, she's notated, she originally said in six months, she wanted to give that person a 5% raise, but she went ahead and put it, Ben, so it would fall into a new budget year. She put it into the current year. So they were just hired at the comp board level plus, um, an increase of $1,457.
So, uh, being hired in at top level and s, six month timeframe, 5% increase.
Well, she went on and built rather than waiting six months because that would go into a new fiscal year. She went ahead and granted it in the current.
Right.
So it would be the higher salary plus 5%.
Well, I'd have to go off, Mr. Hogan.
This is the new person just hired, this salary plus this to be a total of that.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Mr. Board's pleasure. Well?
Couldn't debate.
This one doesn't require.
Just don't require, thank you.
I guess you would have to ask for a motion?
It would only be a motion to approve. You don't need a motion to not approve it.
Okay. Is, that's what we want. Okay.
There's no motion to approve. You're just going to the next to the chairman.
Okay. Next, transfer of land, Appomattox Community Park. When the EDA originally purchased the Appomattox Center for Business and Commerce, the land set aside for the development of the Appomattox Community Park was supposed to be deeded to Appomattox County for recreational purposes. A plat showing a 100.2 acre division of property was prepared by surveyor William W. Diggleson, Jr. However, the trans, the transaction was never completed. The EDA at its March meeting voted to transfer 100.2 tent acres known as the Appomattox Community Park to Appomattox County, Virginia. The EDA chairman was authorized to sign said deed. If the Board is in concurrence, please accept this transfer of land and authorize the county administrator to sign the deed as written and complete the transaction by recording said document along with the reference plat by William W. Diggleson, Jr. in the clerk's, in the court clerk's office. Mr. Pleasure of the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, uh, make a motion that we, um, authorize the, approve the deed, transfer of land from the Industrial Development Authority to county for purposes of the park.
Motion duly made, is that second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is property requested for surplus. The purchasing agent has attached for, for our review, a list of items to be declared as surplus by the Board of Supervisors. These items will be publicly sold by the purchasing agent and proceeds from the sale of these items will be deposited in the county's general fund for future use. And we have, uh, detached list of surplus and authorized purchase agent to advertise for a public sale. Is there a motion to approve this?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request.
Motion duly made, is that second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is committee appointments. Region 2000 Services Authority Board member appointments. Please consider the reappointment of Susan Adams, county administrator to serve as the Appomattox representative to the Region 2000 Services Authority Board and the Reverend Al Jones as alternate. As a motion to approve.
So move?
Second.
End of discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Jones and Ms. Adams. Next is our consent agenda. Includes appropriation or approval of, uh, approval of all bills and supplemental appropriations, fine item transfers and fund transfers. Any item on the consent agenda shall be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any Board member prior to the vote on the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be considered by the Board individually in order which they were removed from the consent agenda immediately for all the consideration of the consent agenda. So gentlemen, we have before us the consent agenda. Hope everyone's had an opportunity to review any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion duly made and second. Discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Hips? Reverend Jones? Mr. Henkel?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Mr. Latch?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, actually, just I have a quick item today. I was in the office most of the day today, just observing and, and I wanted to comment on what an excellent staff we have here in Appomattox. Not all counties have that. And, uh, just the dedication, the commitment to, that the staff here has and, and everybody I interact with cares about the county and cares about the citizens. I just want to compliment our staff.
Well, thank you for that, that wonderful comment and Ms. Adams, you and your staff. Y'all have displayed yourself well.
We try.
All right. Mrs. Adams?
Yes, sir. I, um, I put a report before you. I think all of you should have a copy. And as I have done in the last couple of months, I've got the different departments with some data that will help you in, um, throughout the budget process as well as any constituents have questions on what these various departments are doing. The numbers may help you with that. The only thing I do wanna point out a couple of things. First and foremost, I know we talked about repairing the trail and the road at the community park. And the EDA had obtained bids and the bids come in extremely high. Everybody that was putting in a quote on those were basically building roads. And we knew that wasn't affordable, so we reached out to our landfill supervisor, Mr. McCleese. And he works well with heavy machinery and so we rented some equipment. And the EDA authorized up to $12,000 to help do the repair cost. So, um, with a lot of expertise from Mr. McCleese and a lot of gravel and some equipment, he has repaired it and it has opened back up. So.
Great.
And, you know, that's probably a short-term solution until we have another,
Flood.
Another flood like we had last year. And that will determine, I guess, how well the work is, but we were very pleased. He utilized, uh, he came in before hours as well as we allowed him to use work hours to get that job completed. So. It's always good when, when your employees are willing to go above and beyond and like, uh, Mr. Latchy said, we have great employees. So. And I think he may have come in under budget, didn't he, Mr. Rourke?
I think he did.
That's even better. The, the EDA is absorbing the cost up to the twelve thousand. Um, unless you have questions, I'm not gonna sit here and read everything to you, you probably don't want me to do that.
I would like to respond to, thank you for the additional info that you have provided.
Well, hopefully it's helpful, and if it's something you're looking for that you're not seeing in the report, let me know, and we'll try to obtain that information also.
Good job, thank you. Any questions? Okay. Next, we have, uh, reports and informational items, which encompasses school financial report, National Day of Prayer, Virginia Lawless Association, Rob Lee Lee Law, Soil and Water Conservation District Board of Directors' meeting minutes, and invitation to Hope's Legacy, requine, uh, rescue, animal control officers open house. Any questions on any of those informational items? All right. Next, we move to supervisor concerns. Mr. Hips?
I don't, I don't remember the date of this, but, uh,
if it's appropriate, if county staff would communicate with the sheriff to see if a resolution would be in order for the resource officer at the high school, who, you know, prevented a potential loss of life there. But again, because that's an ongoing situation, just to check with the sheriff to make sure that that's an appropriate measure. And then anybody else that could be honored during that as well. I understand there's a student involved in that, things like that. Uh, whatever would be, you know, the best approach, if possible.
That's a great thought, it really is.
Outside of that, I don't know.
Reverend Jones? You got any supervisor concerns?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Hinkle?
Yeah, I was gonna try to get to the VDOT this week, and I didn't, but they're closing the railroad crossing at, uh,
East Dean?
Yeah, well, we're, our
Six twenty.
Yeah, where Evergreen landfill is, yeah, convenience center. And I was wondering if they were gonna put up a, a notice of road closing at Evergreen and Old Bethany, because the only notice is down at the railroad track itself, which would allow you from travel from old Evergreen all the way down to Old Bethany Railroad tracks, and then you got nowhere to go except turn around.
Good point.
We'll check with VDOT.
And they also said it was gonna close today, and it wasn't, I went across it, so.
Mr. Hogan?
I'd just like, and, and maybe it's, I guess it's better late than never, but, um, uh, last week was National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And, uh, I'd just like, uh, to, uh, in addition to all of our other public safety, uh, personnel in the county, we don't want to forget our nine-one-one dispatchers, and if they don't answer the phone, then they're not sending anybody else, so, um, nobody else is coming. So, um, I just want to thank them for the job they do for us. Uh, and if Ms. Adams could let Bobby or, uh, whoever's appropriate know that we appreciate what they do, and, um,
Great.
And I will proba, I, I intend to, uh, bring a motion before the board next month. Uh, we meet on May sixteenth, uh, and that is, that's the middle of National Police Week. And, uh, I plan to bring a motion next month for that, to support our, uh, sheriff's office and law enforcement partners. I forgot to do it last year, that's my fault, so, don't let me forget, Ms. Adams.
That's all.
That's a good one. Huh?
If we do the resolution, that would be appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah, make a cabana.
Okay. Next is the closed session. Uh, Mr. Latch?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Gentlemen, ladies?
Do we have a closed session?
Well, we had a request for a closed session, and I think the board discussed it before the meeting, and
Needed some more, yeah, needed more information, uh, before we have a closed session.
I guess to offer an explanation, um, I think it was deferred from the February meeting to this month, the closed session is what the request was from Mr. Porter. And after the discussion, the board wanted to know if you have anything in writing that you could submit as a detailed plan of, to address those questions from the February, and if not, they would like to defer it to a time that they can look at the responses, and then be able to respond back, rather than have conversation about interpretation of policies or something.
I understand what you're asking, you want our response to the things we discussed at the last meeting?
We were assuming, we were assuming that that was a response to the MOU that we talked about in closed session about the responsibilities.
That's part, that's, that's only one thing, there was a million other.
And that way they have time to review it before they sit down and have another discussion with you. Is what they're requesting.
And, and we need to make sure that what we're gonna discuss is a matter we can legally discuss in closed session.
Right.
Well, I see your point. Well, it's just, it's just, we're, we're responding to the concerns you brought up at the first meeting. And so it's still, that's why we're concerned, it's discussing personnel, it has to be in the closed meeting.
Right, that's correct. They just want to make sure that, you know, once it's been discussed the first time in closed session, then there are only certain things that you can bring back to closed session the second time. And that's why the attorney needs to verify those items.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I didn't either until I had a conversation with him this afternoon.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate your time.
Like to, uh, thank our treasurer and, and her spouse here tonight. I just love seeing constitutional officers in here that pays attention to the county. And upon saying that, Mr. Hinkle?
I move aye.
And the funny thing is you can make a motion adjourned anytime.
I know, and it's non-debatable, right?
It's non-debatable, it's number one, it jumps ahead every other motion.
So if you don't like what's going on, just move to adjourn, and the meeting's over, right?